Good evening. It's now 5:00 and we'll call it one of the Finance Subcommittee meeting. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Chairman Scott.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three items on the agenda. We have a discussion around the loan orders for the parking kiosks and garage and the ARPA funding discussion. We're going to start the evening talking about the parking kiosks and the garage, and I just ask if there's anybody here to speak on those two item agendas, if they'd like to come and speak. And if there is nobody, then we'll turn it over to Connor Baldwin, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm here with the Parking Director Terry Ryan, and we are going to deliver a presentation. This was brought before the regular City Council earlier this term and has been referred to the Finance Subcommittee for further discussion, so without further ado, we'll jump right in. In October of 2021, the Parking Department completed an existing conditions study of two of the city's garages by Gale Associates. The study included a proposal for repairs totaling $7.5 million, inclusive of both garages, and we are therefore proposing loan orders to finance both repair projects, the debt service of which will be paid by the Garage Enterprise. The city, as a reminder to the public, runs the garage operation as an enterprise fund, that is a manner of accounting whereby the rates are set commensurate to fund the total operations of the city department, including salary and wages, certain expenses for contractors, and debt service for capital assets. So the scope of work contemplated in the study was, as I mentioned, the George Ayotte Parking Garage and then the Downs Parking Garage. Next slide, please.
So the Ayotte Garage is the one closest to the Songas Arena. It holds roughly 1,250 cars. It was constructed in 1985. The last work done there was approximately 2016. The people that use the garage are Lowell High students, the Songas Arena naturally, and residents of River Place and the Edge. Some of the big items that we're looking at repairing there, there are three areas of repair, immediate repairs, short-term and long-term. We did bump EV chargers at this garage and the other garage from long-term repairs to immediate, only because of the increased use of EV vehicles. And in each garage, we'll be adding eight ports. That's four stations, eight ports, and the necessary electrical to support that. Some of the big items in the Ayotte Garage include the drains, joint sealants, especially on the top floor, which is basically the roof of the garage. And if we can stop the leaks there, we can, you know, prevent a lot of the water damage from within the garage. We're also looking at the stair towers at the Ayotte Garage. If you go up these stairs, they're partially exposed, and they're basically rusting, rotting, paint is peeling off. We cannot get to it. It's something that we can't do as a parking department to get in there, so it really needs to be get sandblasted, cleaned up, and repaired. You'll see some pictures further in the report.
So this next slide shows a history, rather, of the annual revenue for that particular garage and an analysis of the debt service coverage. So each year, on average, 2021 being a notable exception because of COVID, the revenue in the Ayotte Garage is about $814,000. We're projecting for the component of the cost, the capital cost, the debt service on that, to be about $200,000 a year. So the annual revenue on the garage does cover it. Now, it is a system-wide enterprise, so we're just breaking it down here for comparison purposes. It's not that each garage funds the debt service, but it does have the revenue to do so were that the case.
The Downs Garage, currently located at 75 John Street. It is a very busy garage. It was built around 1990. It accommodates just over 1,100 cars on a daily basis, and it's in really tough shape. The drainage is in poor shape. It's blocked. It backs up. The pipes are rusted. The pipes are falling. Okay? We have severe water problems during the spring, during the heavy rains, and in the winter, when we get water in the garage, naturally, it freezes. We have bought some pumps to pump out the garage at various levels, and we also have people in there with squeegees to push the water out and into the drains that do work. So it is a catastrophic problem. We actually replaced pipes in the office because when it rained, our office flooded, and so we did replace those pipes immediately. Couple of items that we are looking at that are pretty important. The caps on the roof, you'll see in one of the pictures, they're stone blocks on the roof. They're sliding. So those all have to be removed, and dowels will be inserted so that they don't slide, along with special mortar to hold those in place. That is what we feel is a major safety issue, and if you go up there and take a look, you'll see a few of them are sliding right out of place.
So a similar projection here for the Downs Garage. The revenue each year is higher, on average, about $1.2 million in this garage, and the debt service is somewhat similar, $210,000 a year.
On this slide, you'll see a chart, and basically what it boils down to is if we don't do repairs now, the costs will exponentially explode if we wait much longer, and we'll get to a point where one or two of these garages would have to be replaced. Okay? We're not there yet, and there is no danger imminent, but, you know, we have to address the water issues at both garages. And you'll see in these pictures here, the scope of work. Picture on the left shows the top floor where the grout is missing. The water sinks in. Similar to the second photo, it leaks underneath and basically rots the connections, the flange connectors that hold the cement pieces together. And in looking at this, Gale Associates is estimating that up to 30% of these flange connectors will have to be dug out and replaced because, basically, they got wet and they're rotting away. Okay? So that's the major issue on the top floors. Okay? And go to the next slide. Some of the drainage issues you can see in these pictures, you know, the drain is falling down in some places. It has completely fallen out, and no one has been hurt, but we have had pieces of these drain pipes fall on cars. Okay? And we've been lucky, and we've taken down some of the ones that look shaky to us. But when we do do that, now the water is just draining onto the floor below it, so it creates a problem now on the next floor down. So the drainage pipes in both garages have to be replaced. We've looked at using PVC, but because of fire regulations, really can't use that, and at the end of the day, the pipes that we have now are still the best bet to use. Next slide. These are the basements of the Downs and Ayotte Garages. You'll see that the puddles are forming, and it's some of the base support units. The concrete is completely pulled away, and we are going to have to, at the Downs Garage, support the garage, all floors, and basically dig out the supports down to the rebar, replace the rebar, and then recement it and remove the supports. So it is a big job. It's a job that Gale says can be done safely, but it just has to be done. This is just a slide on the EV chargers. Both garages have been looked at by an electrical contractor to safely add the extra ports, and at the Downs Garage, we are at capacity right now for electric vehicle charging, and that does not include the extension cords we use for the city cars. These are just the charge point chargers. Okay? And at the Ayotte, we are getting, you know, we have a couple open during the day, but we still need to add more. We will have to add more at all of the garages at some point. Okay. This is the parking kiosk replacement plan. So the original loan order for this was back in March 2013 for the kiosks that are in place now. It did help increase revenue by putting those kiosks in place, replacing the old quarter-fed meters, moving to the kiosk was much better. They took dollar bills, coins, credit cards, things like that. Majority of the debt service will be retired by 2025, and basically, we still have that debt service because those kiosks were phased in over time, they were bought over time, so some of that debt service is still in place. Basically, they are entering their end of life, these kiosks. We have some Phase II machines out there, which seem a little more durable. They're the oldest, but they all have original metal pots. Then we moved into Elite kiosks, which have more plastic in them, and so they didn't last as long. If you talk to anybody on the street now, they have problems with the kiosks. I have problems with the kiosks. We are making a last buy on some pots now, and the prices have gone up, and the last thing I want to do is buy pots, but I need to get these machines up and running, and so that's what we're doing. We're looking at new kiosks. Okay? I've talked to a few vendors. I've had one to the city to look. We currently have 176 kiosks in the city. I certainly will probably not go that high to buy new kiosks because I think we can move more towards apps and pay online and things online and that nature. And I also think this may be the last purchase of parking kiosks because, as the generation gets older, so do the smartphones move along, and people will be more comfortable with smartphones in the upcoming years, and we probably won't need kiosks because people will be more comfortable paying on their phone or whatever system is in place at that time. I think we can use these kiosks better to implement snowbands. The current kiosks, they don't work that well anymore to do that. I can't send a message out and know that it got out to them to put a snowband in place and to cancel it at the end of the snowband. I definitely know that I can't pull that message back, and I have to send a technician out to every machine to get it back into working order. So they're difficult. The new kiosks would allow me to do more dynamic pricing downtown, so where your first hour could be a dollar and a half, and if you stayed six hours, by the end of the six hours, you could be paying five or $6 an hour. So it would make it a little more expensive to park on the street. But I want people, if they're going to park long-term on the street, I want them in the garage. I want the street parkers to be there two hours, so I want to make it, I want to be able to change the prices on the kiosks. New kiosks will allow me to do that easily. I'll also be able to set event rates, say, for the auditorium, the baseball field, Songas Arena, or on those streets, Perkins Hall. I'll be able to set the street rate at $10 for a game and not miss out on revenue there. So there will be a lot of added features that I will be able to do with new kiosks that will increase revenue and also help the businesses downtown. Another ability I would have is to advertise on the screens of these kiosks and offer business discounts, things like that. So, you know, we're at a time when we need to move the kiosks along, and if there's any questions, I can answer anything, I hope.
Want to go to the next slide?
Thank you. Real quick, on the Ayotte, you discussed repairing the stairwells, handrails, all that stuff, and it's exposed to weather. Is there any plan to enclose that to the best of...
We did talk to Gale about that, and they are still kind of mulling that over, but right now, it looks like we're going to have to leave it open and just, you know, deal with the way it is, you know, the way it is now.
Because I see, like, the university, I see other parking garages, and they use even, like, a fabric.
Right. We use that at Hamilton.
Something like that, maybe, to help preserve...
Absolutely.
...work that's going to be done.
Yeah.
And then my second question was, we're discussing the purchase of seems very technologically advanced kiosks. Does it come with a service package? Because I know that's a problem we struggle with now.
We would buy, we could buy a service plan. They also offer the option to train one of our technicians, or we could, you know, like you said, have a service plan where one of their technicians comes out. The machines now are a lot more plug-and-play, whereas right now, we have wires going everywhere and antenna wires and moving parts. You know, on a new one, if we need to change the printer, it's unscrew it, pull it out, put a new one in. It's pretty modular right now.
And so, as far as the kiosk replacement, the money that we're talking, would that service plan be included in this, or is this additional?
It would be included in the initial purchase price, and then what we'd have to do after that, we pay as we use them. There'd be, you know, maintenance fee on a monthly basis, and I think it was, it's not that expensive. It's $100 a machine, I think. But it's, you know, it's well within the budget with the money we could pull in with these.
Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia.
So if I may conclude, there is a slide here that's probably a little difficult to read, but this is the enterprise fund forecast. We maintain rolling five-year forecast for all of the enterprise in the budget each year, and this, we have expanded to incorporate the debt service for these two contemplated capital projects. The proposal here from the Finance Department and the Parking Department is to finance each of these purchases through loan orders, and, as I mentioned in the beginning, the debt service on those loan orders would be paid back by the Garage Enterprise. So in walking back through, an enterprise fund is meant to be self-supported, so the rates need to be set commensurate with the costs of the enterprise each year. If the operating revenues exceed the expenses, the enterprise can build up what's known as retained earnings. This is somewhat like a free cash for enterprise, and it rolls forward into the subsequent year. Over the last several years, the Garage Enterprise has built up a retained earnings balance, but over the last year and a half, so it has started to eat into that. It is likely that at some point in the future, we will need to talk about rate increases again, but part of the reason we're bringing forth both the capital repairs for the garage as well as the loan order for the kiosk is so that we can get, explore new revenue opportunities through the advanced technology in the kiosk and hope that some of that revenue will offset some of the debt service in the next year or so. We're also exploring the ARPA revenue replacement, which will likely be a vote that will be brought forward before the council, to put some of that back into the parking enterprise. There was a lot of the revenue loss that we experienced was in the parking enterprise. However, the way that we had to account for it was to take it all as a receipt from the ARPA into the general fund. As Mr. Ryan mentioned, this would allow us the opportunity for dynamic pricing as well as other revenue enhancements. It is worth noting that by law, any deficit in the Garage Enterprise, or any enterprise fund for that matter, must be raised on the next year in taxes. And so if, in the next couple of years, the Garage Enterprise were to end the year in a deficit and there were no retained earnings balance to absorb that, the city must, and this is true for all municipalities across Massachusetts, must make up that deficit on the next year's tax rate. So you can see by the chart on the screen, this is sort of a worst-case scenario. It has typically been the experience that the revenues have exceeded the expenses in the parking enterprise. COVID certainly threw us for a loop as it relates to the parking enterprise, but we do anticipate that some of these revenue opportunities will allow us to maintain over the next year or so. And we'll be happy to entertain any questions from the Subcommittee as it relates to the repairs or the financing. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you. I guess I have a few questions just about the past meters in carrying the debt service forward that we currently have because we never really finished paying off the last ones, but more so, I'm concerned about the new ones with the life expectancy. And I really like the idea of cutting back on them from the 176 because I think as far back as we can cut, technology is going the other way from these. So it doesn't make sense to over-purchase these if we can cut back and find that savings and cut it to a lower amount, maybe every other one have one that is one way and the other one go the other way. Because my mother-in-law's in her mid-70s, and she has a phone that can have an app. So I think that technology has advanced so far that it would be penny-wise, palm-foolish to spend too much money on kiosks to begin with. So I think that you're in the right direction, and I think that's the way we need to go. And if we do purchase them, I wonder if there's an insurance with them that can go along so that we don't further go into debt when they're out of service, because they're going to be out of service before long. And it makes no sense to go out and purchase things just to purchase them and sit them. They're in the way. There's a lot of things that go wrong with them. I think you outlined that really well. When I look at the EV stations, that's another concern. You know, there's only two in the Downs Garage and four stations in the Ayotte. I think that if you could find savings and not put out kiosks, we could add more stations there. And I understand there's an electrical issue, that you have to upgrade electricity and stuff like that, but I think that's the wave of the future, is to try to get people more to that stage and be advanced in that area during our parking stuff than we are going the other way and not including them. Most places right now, you could probably find some heavy grants for some of the electric stations, and I don't know if you've already looked at that state.
We did apply for grants at the Hamilton Canal, and we received significant grants, and we actually got two more stations than we planned. So that worked out well. I would love to put in more electrical charging stations throughout the city, and we'll have a conversation around that, absolutely.
Yeah, I just think the wave of the future is that way, and I think the apps is the way to go, as you suggested in the beginning. And any way we can reduce that from the 176 number, you know, even cut it in half, is going to show you the savings on the other end, and people have to make their adjustments. They're going to complain. The first time I had to use a controller for a TV and my father wasn't telling me to get up and turn it on, I complained.
So when I talk to vendors, I talk to them, like, the machines we have now. We take coin, we take cash, we take credit card. We'll also want to take touchless, okay? But when you add a bill reader, no matter who the vendor is, they tell me that increases the price significantly. So I'm looking at, you know, maybe we only put every other machine that takes dollar bills to cut down on the cost that way. If you looked on Suffolk Street, we had 10 meters over there on Suffolk Street, which over by U Lowell 101th at Mill. We took out five, and nobody batted an eye, and so we put them over at the Hamilton Canal. We definitely can cut back on the amount of kiosks. And when I talk to the vendor, I started at a number of 160. I'm sure I can go lower than that, but I just, you know, people in the city do depend on them, they do rely on them, and so I do need to put some number in. We just have to put them in strategically.
Yeah, and I think that the wave of the future is also doing that, so I don't think that we want to waste upfront money when we can have people go the other way. But the EV stations is a very key component to what we're doing in those garages because you're seeing more and more, especially with gas prices the way they are.
Absolutely.
They're coming, so I think, for some people, for people like me who don't drive those type of cars, I'm probably going to be stuck on gas in an old V8, but there you go.
Thank you. I would echo, I think most of what I was going to ask was already asked anyways, but the electric vehicle grants, they're still available right now, like, they're still ongoing every year from the state, right? The charge station?
They are, and I've been told there's another round coming out, and we do have a pretty good relationship with the state and some of the vendors that put them in.
Okay. And the parking garage construction, I know we have a lot of lease agreements and everything in the parking garages. How is this going to interfere while construction is going on with the availability of parking?
We will just have to manage the cars, like they did at the Roy Garage when that was redone a few years ago. We'll have to work with Laz parking to shut off floors, shut off, you know, traffic lanes, and just manage it and maybe move some people to another garage if it's possible. We can, you know, we have space at the Hamilton Garage, maybe there are people that can move there. We'll just have to find out what we can do and work with the construction team to, you know, manage that because we do know that people will have to park in that garage during construction.
Okay. And as far as, during our meeting, they mentioned there was some members that had brought up going with a pilot of streets with no meters at all was one of the suggestions. I actually prefer Counsel Gitchia's idea to go with the half number of meters. I think it's time at this point in time to move forward with that. So if you could come forward with, you know, I don't know how that would work, to come forward with the number that you think would work.
What I can probably do is come up with a, you know, a very strategic number and then a higher number that may have a little more coverage. Why don't I do something like that, and we can look at those two options.
Bring forward as options, that would be good.
Okay.
I would ask that you be aggressive on that. I just think that that's the way to go, rather than throw money at something that's going to be obsolete very short.
Okay.
Short span. The only other question I had was for Connor, and it was just about the ARPA fund revenue offset. What is that number? Or do we have a number yet?
The amount that was lost in the Parking Enterprise, I want to say it was 2.9 million. It was a substantial number, and in and of itself was the largest for an enterprise fund. And that, as I mentioned before, was taken in as a receipt in the general fund, so to get it back to the enterprise fund, we'll need an appropriation from the City Council, and that is something that will be forthcoming. It had to flow through the balance sheet and be certified by the Department of Revenue, but it was a significant loss of money. As can be expected, nobody was parking, nobody was out for a long period of time, so we're still bouncing back in the Parking Enterprise.
Sorry, to any of the other consuls. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions through you to Mr. Ryan. Looking at the chart that shows the degradation of condition over time for the garages, obviously the positions for these two garages are plotted. The rest of our garages, where are they on that? Are we going to be looking at more work in these garages? I know the Roy Garage needs some work, as we've talked about, and so I'm just kind of curious the status of those garages, as well as what do we do to make sure, do we have a maintenance plan in place for the Hamilton Garage to make sure that it stays up top with those early maintenance? Because I think that, you know, heading this off at the pass before things get bad is probably the best way to go. But thank you for bringing this forward. There's obviously a lot of work that needs to get done, and I'm anxious to see it start.
So as far as the other garages go, Hamilton is good. The Roy Garage on Market Street was just done a few years ago. There was a major renovation done there. That should be okay. It's the early garage would probably be the next one we look at, and Lower Locks was done a few years, I think, at the time, 2016, probably. That was done. The big thing we find is, you know, you have to flush the drains. Every spring, you have to clean out the drains or the drains rot, and they're blocked, they rot, they fall out. So that is something we started doing last fall. We did it early. We got Laz in there, and they started draining all the drainage systems. I've made that an issue. And then, you know, we have to replace the grout on the roof of the garages in all of the garages, and that's going to be an issue that we'll look at one garage every year. So we'll have the two garages done this year. We had the Ayotte, so we'll look at the other few garages that we have to go back to, but I think on a yearly basis, we have to look at what garage needs new grouting on the roof. And like I said, when you seal the roof of a house, you prevent the leaks inside, and that will help a lot of the problems inside. That'll prevent a lot of the problems. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. I would invite you to come by the Roy Garage the next time we get a heavy rainstorm. Even starting shortly after they did that work, there's still some significant ponding issues that happened on the second floor. We've talked about the concrete issues.
Oh, yes.
I found some more in my hood the other day, so.
Okay.
It's still ongoing, and we can talk about that in detail offline, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Okay. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion that we recommend to the full council that we request the city manager to have the law department prepare the loan orders necessary to fund the garage construction and the parking kiosks. Motion. Oops.
With the service plan included in it?
Oh, including a service plan.
Okay.
Motion by Counsel Robinson, second by... Motion by Council Robinson, second by Council Gitchia. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Yay. Motion passes. And I don't know how we'll word that though, as far as we talked about reducing the number of kiosks. I don't know if you'll come back with two different.
That'll be how I do it.
Numbers?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we will go on to our discussion on the ARPA funds. I'd like to start off with any public input, if anyone would like to speak at this point in time. Anyone? Yeah, don't be shy, come on up. Thank you. If you could just say your name and your address, thank you.
I'm here today, or I should say, good afternoon, Councilors Robinson, Scott and Gitchia. I'm here today to ask the city to actually take a step back or if you will, hit the pause button on finalizing the ARPA spending plan. Our concern is the lack of community engagement that's gone into drafting this plan, which I think is also reflected in the lack of initiatives that seem to be aimed at addressing longstanding inequities in the community. U.S. Treasury guidelines regarding ARPA funding direct local governments to spend ARPA funds to, quote, "aid the communities and populations hardest hit by the crisis", supporting an equitable recovery by addressing not only the immediate harms of the pandemic, but its exacerbation of longstanding public health, economic and educational disparities, end quote. Yet out of the 25 million earmarked for equity-focused services, 9.2 million is allocated for Shed Park and Colley Stadium upgrades and 4 million for municipal buildings upgrades. Only 2 million out of the 75 million in ARPA funds for Lowell go to as yet undefined community-driven projects. Beyond that 2 million for community projects, which again are still not clearly defined, it's difficult to find any ARPA allocations that seem to address longstanding health, economic and educational disparities. If there was more community engagement around the funding, perhaps it would be clearer to the community how ARPA dollars are being spent to address these issues and to ensure an equitable recovery for all, as is also outlined in U.S. Treasury guidelines. Until today, the only effort made by the city to solicit resident ideas was a forum on the city's website that was an English-only, was not widely promoted throughout the community and garnered a total of 108 responses. Out of a city of around 111, 113 residents, that's a response or engagement rate of less than 0.1%. We did hear from one of our community partners that the city had reached out to them today to ask for their help in organizing a community input forum, which is a start, but much more engagement with residents, especially those most impacted by the pandemic, is needed and not just on the $2 million that are set aside for community projects. We really need to take a good look, the community as a whole and not just City Hall, at whether over $14 million in upgrades to Two Parks and Belvedere and a handful of municipal buildings will go towards mitigating inequities. Low-income and under-resourced populations in neighborhoods such as Centerville, the acre and Lower Highlands likely have the greatest recovery needs. Listening to and learning from residents in these communities as well as others in the city will provide our city leaders with valuable insights and guide decisions on how to spend funds equitably, both immediately and in the long term. This funding has the potential to produce a significant change in our community, especially when it comes to addressing inequities. So our city leaders must design a public input process with equity in mind. Not only is equity a requirement for local governments and ARPA spending, it's also in the best interest of the city overall. I have just a couple of examples of how some cities around the country are engaging their residents in the process of determining how funds should be allocated in a way that ensures the city understands the needs of all its residents and creates a spending plan that reflects these needs and aims for an equitable recovery. In Shreveport, Louisiana, hosted a series of eight in-person listening sessions at community centers around the city where residents were able to provide their input to city leaders on ARPA funding. In Pittsburgh, PA, the mayor created a recovery task force designed to create a racial equity-oriented plan to spend ARPA funding in collaboration with leaders in the black community. In Atlanta, Georgia, city leaders launched a COVID-19 community impact survey, again in collaboration with several local organizations to gather insights from black, Latinx and immigrant residents to better understand the short-term and structural challenges that they faced over the course of the pandemic. These are just a few of the ways other cities are ensuring their residents' voices are heard in the ARPA planning process and that equity is at the forefront of their pandemic recovery process. ARPA funding presents a once-in-a-generation opportunity for Lowell. The legislation is designed not only to help offset the economic, health and social impacts of the pandemic, but also to invest in our community's vision for the future. Due to the potential transformational impact of these funds, it is vital to ensure that city officials and the community they serve are on the same page regarding community priorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you. Just your name and address, please.
Amy Pesia. I live in Amherst, New Hampshire, but I'm privileged to serve as the Executive Director at the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. And I appreciate all of your service to our neighbors throughout the city. And I also acknowledge the work of my counterparts who are here tonight, who are dedicated to serving the needs which existed even before the pandemic. And we are in a position to either speak on behalf of those that we serve and/or collect their stories and provide a forum to let all of you know, who have this enormous responsibility of managing these funds in addition to the other responsibilities you have. We are already providing the services that people needed before the pandemic and we are in a position to be able to advise and collect the information so that we can best serve everybody as we all recover physically and financially regarding or following the pandemic. So we urge you to consider listening to our feedback and that of the residents that you all serve so well, so that we can spend these funds in the best way possible. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sidney Liang. I live at 23 Philip Street in the Acre neighborhood. I am currently a Senior Director for MATA Health Center at Lowell Community Health Center, a Fire One C three organization. While we have over 100 people participated in the ARPA city survey, I believe more inclusive idea from the residents are needed. Additional outreach is a must and the community participation determined by meeting the residents where they are and not at City Hall or online is extremely important. While the Qualify Census Track can be a tool, it's only a portion of suggested areas and not necessarily represent the entire city of Lowell. On this note, I think a little over 25,000 allocated to each neighborhood is not enough, especially these neighborhoods that are daily usage areas for its residents. As such, the Colley Stadium, the Downtown Business Improvement Fund and the Shed Park Alignment Expenses should be reevaluated. It's not well-distributed and unbalanced spending of the ARPA fund. I believe at least 125,000 should be allocated to each neighborhood and oversee by counselor representing those neighborhoods so each neighborhood can take pride and symbolize normalcy and survival from this pandemic. To be more inclusive in obtaining feedback from the community on how to best invest in the community and allocate this fund, it is and will be critical to implement linguistically tailored and community-based approaches to obtaining this feedback. Lowell Community Health Centers and many community partners that are here are eager to collaborate on that process. It is essential to clearly define and balance the priorities of the community, city departments and the city council. If you look at the public input result of the poll on Figure Five from this note here, the top and the biggest need jumping at you is help people. Yet the lowest fund allocated to premium pay, one of the ARPA categories, is the lowest among all categories. Our resident needs help. Can we help offset some funeral costs for those who did not seek or know about the federal assistance or support for the caretaker of those affected by COVID-19 and other medical needs? ARPA funds is a once-in-a-generation funding. It is not an infrastructure funding. We need input from all generation and all corners of the city of Lowell for all balanced spending of these funds. Our resident can speak and our resident will speak if we can get to them and meet them where they are. I work at Lowell Community Health Center. As a health center, we are asking you to be more inclusive. As a city, we can do this. We've done this before. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you could just state your name and address, please.
I have copies. Do you want copies?
Sure. Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Dawn Salma and I am the Co-Executive Director of the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence. Of the more than 60 domestic violence agencies in Massachusetts, ATASK is still the only one linguistically and culturally specific agency serving Asian victims of violence and survivors. Many of our clients are low-income, mothers with young children, immigrants and those that are limited English proficient. The abuser exploits their lack of English, using this as a tool to control and isolate the victim, ensuring that they don't get access to victim services. Abusers also use it as a method to deliver misinformation, such as law enforcement won't help you, providers won't understand you and you'll suffer. Unfortunately, they're not wrong. There is a point, often in fear and desperation, when a victim finally gains the courage to reach out for help. And unfortunately, when they do, they are re-traumatized by the very systems that they're supposed to help them, by law enforcement and when abuser is permitted to tell the story because they speak better English. When a client's unemployment benefits are terminated because they didn't understand the email notification delivered in English. When employers and landlords exploited them because they know it's their only job and they can't get, the only job that they can get and the only home that they can afford, by interpreters that unintentionally make matters worse because they're not trauma-informed or understand the cultural context. When the tuition for English classes is too expensive for minimum wage earners, making it impossible for them to learn English needed for a living wage job. We serve over 500 households a year and this is their reality when attempting to seek help, experiences that replicate the same loss of power, control and safety they experienced with their abuser. Each one of these experiences increases their stress, loss of trust, symptoms of depression and anxiety and feelings of hopelessness. And they're often asking us, why is everything I do wrong? Victims turn to, excuse me, victims turn to ATASK to intervene and right the wrongs providers and systems have made because they didn't understand their language and their culture and thus did not understand their situations. We provide trauma-informed services in over 20 Asian languages, not through interpreters, but from our direct frontline staff. They bring access to otherwise inaccessible services. Systemic inequities and barriers to services existed long before the pandemic and have only been amplified under the pandemic. With immediate short-term assistance has been helpful in assisting families in crisis, but we need long-term, community-driven solutions that are embedded in social service systems in order to impact real change. The current systems do not provide low-income, LEP, limited English proficient, communities with opportunities to achieve long-term economic stability. There are patchwork of public benefits, training programs that are not accessible to LEP populations and non-living wage jobs without benefits. Despite full-time jobs at restaurants, maybe nail salons or factories, the communities we work with are still living at the poverty level, vulnerable and a step away from another crisis. For us, we recommend both short-term and long-term solutions for low-income LEP communities and to consider the importance of linguistic and culturally responsive approaches. For short-term solutions, some of the things that we suggest is provide stabilization funds for rent, food, childcare, transportation and other critical needs. To address the immediate needs of the population with culturally responsive services. To partner with culturally and linguistically specific community-based organizations that are best suited to serve the populations you're all trying to serve here. And for long-term solutions, we really need to take the time to understand the needs of the community by consulting with communities and consulting with culturally specific CBOs that are doing the work in the community, to create committees and conduct focus groups in language. To address language access issues such as the lack of translated information and materials in low-incidence languages and to ensure that they're disseminated into limited English proficient communities. To invest in bilingual, bicultural service providers. They provide the needed cultural context and are more cost-efficient many of the time. To invest in BIPOC leadership. To create development programs designed for LEP programs, giving them the opportunity to have living wage jobs and to provide financial assistance and support, childcare, transportation, stipends that will allow this population to participate in workforce development programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name's Angel Brunel. I am here on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell. I live at 517 High Street in Lowell. Just like our schools, government facilities and many businesses, the Boys and Girls Club was forced to close in March of 2020. Within one day, our staff figured out how to continue to serve our club families even though our doors were closed. Throughout the pandemic, the club has offered healthy meals, up to 500 a day in the spring of 2020, a site for remote learning, family care packages and groceries, mental health support and affordable childcare to the families in our community that needed us most. Despite the fact that we are serving fewer youth due to COVID restrictions, our expenses have gone up due to safety protocols and reduced staff-to-member ratios. Our staff and board have remained committed to providing these services as our families are among those most adversely affected by the pandemic. We flexed and adapted to meet specific needs throughout the pandemic by actively seeking out feedback from our families, members and stakeholders. We ask that when allocating these funds, you consider the organizations in our community and there are many who are still doing their very best to ensure that they can address the urgent needs of Lowell's most impacted families. Needs like food and housing security, mental health support and childcare. Our staff are tired, anxious and depleted, yet they continue to meet the ongoing needs of our families and our club members because we are dedicated to our vision of ending generational poverty in Lowell. We need support to keep doing this. The Boys and Girls Club is happy to participate in any community forums, surveys or committees to help determine how these funds can best be used to support the individuals and families in Lowell's who are hardest hit by the pandemic. As one of the many organizations that directly works and serves these families and individuals, we believe we can add a lot of value to the conversation.
Good evening, Finance Committee members. My name is Yun Juche and I'm the Executive Director of Coalition for Better Acre and a resident of 527 Pataque Boulevard. Once again, I'm here to advocate for community input for usage of 76 million ARPA funds city received for recovery effort for COVID. As a taxpayer of the city personally and as well as an organization, I would like this once-in-a-lifetime ARPA funds to be used most efficiently and impactfully for the city of Lowell because city's finance impacts all of us. I'm very supportive of ARPA funds to be used for water and sewer infrastructure and making capital improvements to the municipal buildings. These are kind of investments that are long-lasting and ultimately helps the city's finance for the future growth. However, I would like to ask city to also consider investments and projects that can benefit low-income community members who are most impacted by COVID. We're all here to advocate for community input. So past. One of the biggest items that came out was broadband infrastructure. So my quick research shows many communities, including Salem, Quincy, and Worcester, are looking to build broadband infrastructure, which will provide much more options for the community rather than working with one monopoly company. The cost to build this infrastructure is anywhere from $25 to $75 million. However, according to an article written by Dustin Lucas on Salem News on May 6, 2021, quote, "City leaders signed a contract this week with SciFi Networks," S-I-F-I. "It's a New Jersey company to create the infrastructure for fiber optics network. SciFi will now build a network for homes, businesses, and city government to get access to more internet service options. The $35 million cost to build a network will come out of SciFi's pocket at no cost to the city," end quote. If the cost of the broadband is too expensive, perhaps public hotspots could be also a solution for the city. Technology. When COVID first happened, the childrens were sent home to learn from home. Many families struggled because they didn't have computers for their children. Ultimately, school did provide laptops for all the children, but this could be an opportunity for City to provide laptops for all those school-aged children. Also, a lot of seniors struggled with isolation. This fund could also provide seniors to receive technology lessons and receive a laptop or tablets. Bus stops. In the Acre neighborhood, there are 23 bus stops, and three with covers and seats. All three with covers and seats are UML bus stops. UML paid for all of them and serves UML's shuttle service, not LRTA. Furthermore, there are some bus stops that does not even have signs on the bus stop. Bus app. App that can provide time of arrival to the residents to know when the bus will be arriving at bus stops. Most of the buses in the Acre neighborhood only runs once an hour. So if they miss a bus, or if, like, how would they even know if they missed a bus? And they could be waiting for hours. This would be a great way to help those that needs to take buses. Childcare payment for low-income families. During COVID, many low-income families didn't have ability to work from home and had to choose between taking care of their children or going to their jobs. As we know, childcare cost is very expensive. This fund could assist families on their childcare costs for a year. Universal childcare. Rental or mortgage assistance to avoid foreclosures and eviction. A lot of us that are in housing business are very concerned that this is going to happen in next few years because there's been moratorium for a couple of years on evictions and foreclosures, but it's going to come. Grants to support organizations like Merrimack Valley Food Bank and Wish Project, which were invaluable to all the nonprofits in the community, and they provided essentials like food, PPE, diapers, and all of that, and I am so grateful for all of their work. So thank you, Amy, for your work. Grants to support Greater Lowell Health Alliance and Lowell Community Health Center, who worked tirelessly to educate the community in multiple languages and assisted with vaccine and testing clinics. Grants for community organizations to provide more English classes. Grants to provide workforce trainings to get more people back to work. Assist low-income families with transportation costs to commute to work. Resources to prepare for future public health emergencies. Assist small mom-and-pop businesses that may not have proper paperwork to receive traditional funding. Assist the schools with air quality. Increase voting locations, especially in Centerville, where Robinson School site isn't accessible to those without cars. Add translation services for City Hall and LPD. Click and Report app. App that can take pictures and directly go to the city for the services, like potholes and broken lights. Traffic lights to sync better on roads with multiple traffic lights. Share parking app. Last year, DPD put together an amazing parking plan that actually indicates that City does have enough parking spaces if we actually utilize shared parking work. And my understanding is it was going to come to this City Council for implementation. If we had shared parking app, that would actually make that work a lot easier. Lastly, I have one really interesting idea, and this is from Dave Oled. During his campaign for City Council, they brought up building a sledge plant as a long-term cost-saving idea. So for those of you who may not know this, I had to do a little bit of research on it. So currently, Dock Island processes treatment for wastewater for Lowell, Chemsford, Drakehead, and Tinsborough. The solid residue from sewage treatment plant is called sledge or bio-solids. And according to City's 22 budget, City will spend $4 million to get rid of these bio-solids. This is very expensive annual expenses for the city. So Dave's idea is that the city would build their own sledge process plant that would help and also get help from neighboring towns since they pay into City's sewage processing. For FY '22, combined four towns pays City of Lowell $4.76 million. Once sewer sledge is processed, it can be used as a compass for parks and lawns. Dave Oled was speaking from a personal experience, as he was one of the crew who built one of these plants on Bondi's Island in Springfield. So these were some of the great ideas I was able to gather in the last two weeks, and I hope that, you know, some of these ideas can be researched, vetted, analyzed, and perhaps can be implemented. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak our minds about the money, the COVID money, which was given to the city for the community. I'm not here to speak for myself. I'm here to speak for all of us.
And I'm sorry, could you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is, I'm so sorry. My name is Lavenia Furusa. I am the founder and the executive director of Dwelling House of Hope located on 125 Mount Hope Street on the Potaget Vale. Denrook, Councilor Denrook, is our councilor for the district. He knows what's happening over there. We have a pantry, which last week, Saturday, the police here to come to control the traffic because of what's going on. So right now, I'm here to say, when we're all done here, we're going to go home to look for food. And most of us here are going to have nice, warm, healthy, nutritious food. Do you ever think about those who cannot afford? We take lunches, we go out to eat in restaurants because we can afford. I don't, but most of us here, they do. We work tirelessly. I have Emmy here, and I have other people who do the same thing we do with food, trying to help the people in our city. I know most of you, they don't know what's happening out there, but I would love you guys to consider and to think seriously about that one who goes to bed without food. Maybe you might know where you can put that money to. Even people who are working now, they cannot afford. With what's going on right now, prices have gone up. You go into a supermarket, you come out with nothing. Even if you have $100, you cannot afford much food to feed a family. So I'm here to ask you to consider and check and look seriously what you can do about the food. The people are suffering out there. The people need help. Just take a drive, go to Merrimack Valley Food Bank, go to Dwelling House of Hope, go to Central City, go to Open Pantry. There's so many people who really need food, and we don't just give them food. It's more than that. Diapers, toiletries. People cannot afford anymore. Just visit. We don't want to talk. We want you to visit and see. Maybe you can consider and think and see where you can put, where this money belongs. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Grossman. I live at 83 Varnum Avenue, and I'm here as volunteer with 350 Mass of Greater Lowell, the Climate Justice Group. We agree with the speakers that have preceded me that more can be done to solicit opinions of Lowell residents on this matter. I think we heard a lot of great ideas here today. I know it's not easy, it's a lot of work, actually, to find out what the public thinks and wants, but the work is well worth doing. One other issue that hasn't been addressed yet, I don't think that I feel might come up if we did that, people would talk about the high cost of energy. And there is a way to use ARPA money to meet some of the, to address both the high cost of energy now and other future problems, including the need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The criteria for spending the money includes addressing communities and populations hardest hit by the crisis and addressing longstanding economic and health disparities. You can do that and address people's energy bills by helping people make their homes and apartments more energy efficient. And we all know, living here, we live in old buildings, many of which are not energy-efficient. It's not easy to make them that way. The public programs that exist now, such as MassSafe, take steps in that direction, but there's a big gap for people that don't have the extra few grand that they need to spend to make it work. A good use of this kind of funding opportunity would be to help people, especially low-income people, especially renters, who have to pay their heat bill, make their homes more energy-efficient. It reduces their costs, it will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and it will make their homes healthier and safer for their kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Andrews. I live in Centerville. I actually didn't know any about any of this, but since I volunteer with CBA and I work for Lowell Alliance, that's how I found out about this, which I did campaigning in the summer for the city councilman and getting the word out about the voters, too, which surprised me. So it's kind of sad that we still don't know, as people who live in this community, what y'all are doing. Like, we have no clue. This whole budget thing, the ideas everybody has are really awesome. I was impacted completely different than most of the people here for the pandemic. I got furloughed as a teacher from the boot mills because of the pandemic. I still cannot go back to work because of my health status. I had cancer right before the pandemic hit and had nothing. I had no car, no way of getting help for my children. If it wasn't for CBA and Nancy actually dropping off food to me, I wouldn't have been able to get to the grocery store to help my kids have a nutritious meal. I had no resources. I'm considered low-income, but qualify for about 95 of nothing. I don't get very much help at all because of, I've outlived the status that we have here, the limitation you can get on help. So this kind of money, only going, $2 million, only going to what? We don't know yet, but we're going to put $9.2 million to fix Shed Park? Really? That place is frickin' beautiful. My kids walk there, they have a blast there. It's gorgeous. Sledding, it's constantly being used. Why do we need so much money to going into that? I live in Centerville. I lived in South Lowell. Do you know what there is for the kids to do in Centerville and South Lowell? Nothing. There is completely and utterly nothing. There is no Boys and Girls Club. There is no rec department. There is nothing for these kids to do but run in the streets, and then crime goes up. And this just reminds me of the 1904 story I tell my kids when they come for things. There's nothing for anybody to do, so what do they do? They find something to do. Idle hands are the devil's playpen. So we're not giving these kids anything. All this money is going to these really good neighborhoods that can fix themselves. They have that money. What about us that don't have that money? What about the lines? I've been to the Central Food Ministry. I've been to the House of Hope, when they have, the Dwelling of Hope, when they have their food pantries to give out flyers about rental assistance and things like that. They're hitting 200, 300 people on a Saturday, and they're not open. I work for the diaper bank, and I supply, I help supply families and agencies with diapers. Do you know what we hear? I can't afford where I live. I can't afford to eat. I need a better education. Where do I refer the clients that come to me asking for help when I can't even get help myself? Where are we going to send these people if this money is going to, I don't know, making a prettier park prettier? Like, why are we not sending these resources out into the community? Why are we not building places and structures for people to feel safe, places for kids to feel safe to go to because they're in abusive domestic violence homes? Why are these places not available in this city? We claim we love everybody, but y'all just shut us out and just, I don't know, kind of do whatever you want to do. And it's not right. You want our opinions, you want our help, actually open it up, have a forum. I loved everything that everybody has stated here, and it would help immensely. I can't afford Comcast at all, and that's internet. $300 a month for internet for me to put five kids in school. We don't have Comcast, we don't have Verizon. I have no other option but either pay money I can't afford and go further into debt to try to get my kids an education, or not give my kids an education, have DSS called on me and have my kids removed. These are the options that families are facing. And you guys need to have that reality check, that this money needs to go to a place, not to make things prettier. The parking garage, love that idea. $83 a month. I got to pay for a parking pass to be able to work that I can only use in one parking garage. I can't use it at any other parking garage. I can't give it to anybody else. That means I got to work three days to pay for a parking pass for a part-time job. Where's that discount to those of us who have to work? Why can't we use it at other parking garages? Like, sorry, I don't mean to rant, but that's just how I feel as a citizen, as a parent, as an employee of the town. Y'all should just help us out some more. Like, screw beautifying more beautiful places, but actually put this money towards helping the people get food, get transportation, get education, better ourselves so we can help our children better themselves, so they can better this town in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Godet. I live at 4 Bertram Street in the Highlands of Lowell, and I'm here to represent Merrimack Valley Project, which is a social justice organization in the Merrimack Valley. We have chapters in Haverhill, Lawrence, and in Lowell. We're made up of faith communities, labor unions, and community groups, and we take our concern from the issues that are raised by our members. And of course, we've been affected by the pandemic, as all the organizations have spoke before me, and we've tried to respond, but that has had an impact, of course, on budgets and on resources when we tried to address the crisis. I would urge you as the committee and, of course, the council to stay true to the goal that comes attached with these monies, to reach out to those most impacted by the pandemic. In the case of Merrimack Valley Project, our labor unions, our public school teachers, public sector workers, service providers of all kinds, essential workers who really stepped up during the crisis. And we hear from them that, you know, there's still a lot of unmet needs that could be addressed by this substantial allotment for our city. And the faith communities that are part of Merrimack Valley Project, too, are not the monolithic organizations that they might have been years ago. They consist of a lot of public sector workers, service providers of all kinds, essential workers who really stepped up during the crisis. And we hear from them that, you know, there's still a lot of unmet needs that could be addressed by this substantial allotment for our city. And the faith communities that are part of Merrimack Valley Project too are not the monolithic organizations that they might have been years ago. They consist of a lot of immigrant groups for whom English is not their first language. So I would urge you, on behalf of our membership, to make sure that this process is as complete as it can be with in-person listening sessions so that everybody gets a chance to participate and to tell their stories. And lastly, I would recommend that in whatever we do as a city, that we make this process as transparent as possible. Lowell is fortunate to have its own newspaper, and of course, media outlets and cable and so on, can be the communications process that makes this the kind of response that our whole city can be proud of. And so I urge you to take these steps and make sure that we get the best bang for our buck for the largest number of those who are underserved in our city. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Laura Gilmore. I live at 555 Andover Street. I'm here to add my voice to those raising concerns about the draft list of projects and the limited public input on this important funding. And I want to note that as a Belvidere resident, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that 12% of the funding is being allocated to parks in my neighborhood. As others have noted, this funding is a rare opportunity to shape our city, to respond to some of our most pressing challenges, and I would argue to show our values and commitment to equitable process and implementation. Given that, I'm here to ask you to gather more robust community input in multiple languages, in multiple forums, and at different times of day, and to make a clear connection between that outreach and the selected projects. It struck me in watching the city council meeting a few weeks ago that it wasn't clear why these projects were being selected or how they aligned with the community input that had been received. That's not to say that there aren't some interesting projects on the list, but I would like to see a clearer line drawn between each project, why it's being proposed, and how it relates to community feedback and goals. I did a quick look today, as others have, just to understand what other communities are doing in terms of community outreach and in allocating funding to promote equity and respond to community impacts. The National League of Cities recommends that communities gather data through community engagement and seek to understand the disparities in their community and then address the needs of underserved groups. They also recommend that communities consider and measure equity in program development and on an ongoing basis to determine if funding allocations have been effective. Locally, it looks like other communities are proposing to spend funding in a number of ways you've heard about: workforce development, housing, schools, infrastructure, digital equity. Some have done much more extensive public outreach through surveys, focus groups, advisory committees, and public meetings. And interestingly, one that I would note is I saw that one community proposed to use funds for a comprehensive equity audit to understand the needs of their community better. I started by saying that this funding is an opportunity. I also think the process we take is an opportunity, and I hope we can view this as a chance to improve our community engagement and think more holistically about how we determine priorities in this city. Thank you.
Is there any more speakers? Mr. Baldwin, if you could continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank all of the speakers who are here with us tonight for their input. We've prepared a presentation. We're a little bit short on time here, so I'll just hit the high points. We have a review of the background and the totals of funding received by the city. So in total, the city received just under $76 million between the municipal allocation, which came as a direct formula, and then through the county. Lowell is part of Middlesex County, which is a defunct county government, and so a direct allocation of 21 million will also come to the city to date. The city has received 38 million of the total. So the eligible categories of the American Rescue Plan are listed here, and this presentation will put on the website for people to review, for the public to take a look at. The categories are supporting the public health response, replacing public sector lost revenue, which is something we touched on in the first section of the agenda, water and sewer infrastructure, addressing the negative economic impacts, which largely speaks to some of the input we've received here this evening, premium pay for essential workers, and then broadband infrastructure. These are from the guidance. So the plan that was put forward was a framework for which we intend to, and we'll get to this at the end of the presentation, further define through additional public input. So in order to move forward with the allocation, certain buckets were created and allocated funding. Now, these are not set in stone by any stretch, and as I mentioned, we're only a framework upon which the city will build the ARPA plan. So you can see here the results of that framework, the $36 million addressing the negative economic impact, $17 million for water and sewer infrastructure, $10 million, which is the standard deduction for public sector revenue loss. That was the city's first priority. Now, this came after a number of discussions with the prior city council when the ARPA allocation was first accepted by the council, that it was the first order of priority to stabilize the city's finances. And so that $10 million, a portion of it was taken into FY21. The balance will be taken in FY22, but in the final rule, the U.S. Treasury has standardized the guidance so that communities can take a standard $10 million deduction, whereas before it was a pretty in-depth calculation. However, the city did go through, did go through those calculations nonetheless. Please. So to date, the major component that has been spent has been revenue loss. So you can see on, well, if you can see on the chart there, as I just mentioned, the amount received to date is the first two tranches of either allocation. So on the municipal allocation, the city's received 27.2 million, and on the county allocation, just under 11 million for a total of 38 million. That money is on deposit in the city treasury. The amounts spent to date are almost entirely for the revenue loss. So that was 7.9 million in FY21. The other amounts spent to date have been on testing. So the city did offer free tests to residents, and COVID response was one of the number-one priorities after stabilizing the city's finances. You know, there are certain incidental costs associated with the distribution of the tests, as well as other public input that has happened thus far. The city did do a survey, not just the form that was put on the website, but there was a, excuse me, a survey that was conducted with a representative sample that was part of the initial plan. Please. So we'll just run through these frequently asked questions, but I think there is an important point in the first one that we are under a bit of a time crunch. So while we want to engage the community further and have additional input, we cannot wait too long before we start to spend the money. So there is a period of time set in the federal guidance that the money must be allocated by December 31, 2024. Now, that means for us, logistically, we have to have purchase orders, we have to have contracts, we have to have all of the ducks in a row, so to speak. Now, we can spend against those up until December 31, 2026. However, all of the funds must be encumbered before the end of 2024 calendar. We've talked about revenue loss already. Please. And this goes into detail about what the negative, how communities can address negative economic impacts, but it sounds from the public input here, people understand that pretty well. So finally, we, the city has heard, the city administration has heard the input from the community, and so we're going to have additional sessions. There are, right now, a total of eight additional public meetings will be held. Currently, and probably the first of the sessions, we've been working with the Boys and Girls Club to schedule one of these. And then there will be seven subsequent meetings, and we will try to hit each one of the eight neighborhoods in the city. So other communities, as some of the public input has mentioned here this evening, some communities have structured each one of those meetings based on different categories. So maybe a meeting about addressing the negative economic impact, a meeting about water sewer infrastructure. What we're proposing here is to have each one of the meetings generally about ARPA, where folks can come to the meeting, they can share their, they can share their suggestions, their ideas, very similar to what was happening here tonight. And Mr. Flynn, who I will introduce in a moment, is certainly taking lots of notes from all of the great ideas people have had this evening. But it will be like a charrette, where, and the city engaged a very similar process for the master plan, Sustainable 2025 Lowell, where there will be a meeting, where, a public meeting where folks can come, there'll be a series of tables. Each one of the tables will have a facilitator, members of the public can come and give their ideas. There'll be large, you know, the sticky poster board, pieces of paper. All of the ideas will be read up, those will be collected. Mr. Flynn will attend each one of those meetings. There will likely be other city officials there. We will take all of those in, and we'll present a revised plan after the culmination of these public input meetings. So we wanted to give the finance subcommittee an update on where we're at, and we certainly appreciate all the input here. If you could just go to the final slide. So part of the, okay, part of the initial ramping up of the city was to get, stabilize the city's finances, but to bring on a position that can manage and handle the administrative tasks associated with the plan. So here with us tonight is Mr. Brendan Flynn. He is the ARPA Finance Manager. He will be the city's main point of contact for the ARPA program hereforth. I'm also here with Ms. Chambers, the Deputy CFO for the city, but he will be the face and the name to know. His email address is BFlynn@LowellMA.gov. He is physically located here in City Hall in the finance office and will be the main point of contact for organizations and for partners on this very important project for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome, Mr. Flynn. At this point in time, should we continue the discussion? Make a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue this discussion to a further date, just because we're in time crunch right now for the regular city council meeting.
If I may, Council Scott, I just want to indicate that there are two letters that I received from authored by CTI Lowell Plan, Lowell Community Foundation, and Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Humane Society. I just want to make them part of the record.
Yeah, we'll continue the discussion, like I said, an additional meeting at a further date, so we can provide more input on this. Second is by Council Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
All right. The only thing I want to add to the discussion is that, just for information purposes, that the city council doesn't have a final say on how ARPA money is spent. It's the manager's position. It is not the city council's oversight. We can ask certain things, but rulings from other cities and communities, it is the final decision of the city management, not the city council. So like all of you, we have the same input that you have. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking.
Thank you.